Call the meeting of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, August 19th, and it's 7:30 PM. I'll open the, uh, this meeting has been called, and it's been noticed, prior notice has been given, and it's being conducted in accordance with NJASA 10:4-6, that section of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Ask you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll open the meeting now for anyone that has anything that's not on the agenda for this evening. And let me just say, it's so good to see so many of you here this evening. We usually operate with an echo. So, thank you all for coming. Uh, and I'd ask you too, if you haven't already, please mute or silence your cellphone. Please call the roll.
Mr. Paraway.
Here.
Councilman D. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Mr. Mandel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Keller.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And our board engineer is not here tonight.
Thank you. Uh, we have a resolution on the agenda. Would someone move it, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move a resolution recommending that the property identified as Block 392 Lots 1 and 2 be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Is there a second?
Fergieri's second. You got whoever.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Paralek.
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Easy as night, you all, Mr. O'Neill.
All right, the agenda for this evening is the presentation and adoption of the master plan reexamination, and the adoption of the housing element for the fair share plan. And for that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Snikus and Ms. Leslie London.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Over to the right, you're missing it.
Oh. Looking the wrong way.
I was waiting for the laser to dot me.
Good evening again. This is a presentation and overview of the affordable housing obligations that have been imposed on the township and all the other municipalities in the state of New Jersey. Although some of you, if not all of you, have seen this presentation maybe once or twice, and probably know it by heart, I think it's still important to go through the background and how we arrived at where we are today, because it's very important, and also for those people who maybe are not aware of the history of affordable housing and the obligations that are imposed on municipalities like the township, and why we are here, and how we arrived here. So, to start with, we go back to 1975. Mount Laurel 1, Mount Laurel 2 in 1983, where the Supreme Court of New Jersey made it a constitutional obligation for municipalities in New Jersey to provide its fair share of housing, affordable housing in the region. This is a constitutional obligation. It's not something that the township is imposing, or the state, from the state is imposing, it's a court-mandated obligation. Mount Laurel 3 came in 1986, and it affirmed the validity of the New Jersey Fair Housing Act. New Jersey is one of the few states, I think this may be only one of the state, that has a constitutional obligation to provide fair share housing for residents. COA, the Council on Affordable Housing, was established by the New Jersey Fair Housing Act, and it was charged with promulgating rules to determine a municipality's affordable housing obligation and to certify housing plans. Townships like Parsippany were required to prepare a housing element and fair share plan to lay out how the municipality intended to meet its housing obligation. COA promulgated rules for the first and second rounds, and the township, in accordance with the Fair Housing Act, prepared plans for each of these rounds, and received substantive certification from COA. The third round came around, and the township, in accordance with the law, prepared a third round plan and petitioned COA for substantive certification on two occasions. They had amended the plan at one point. Also during this time, COA's third round rules were being challenged in the court by several entities. Litigation proceeded for many years, and the third round rules were subsequently deemed to be non-compliant. The Fair Share Housing Center filed suit in New Jersey, March 10th, 2015. The decision came out by the Supreme Court, and it's known as Mount Laurel 4. That case is what we are operating under now, and in that case, the court took away COA's reign, if you want to call it that, over affordable housing, and returned it to the courts. So, COA had essentially ceased to exist except for some staff, small staff, and had not promulgated rules. So, the court said, "We're tired of this. Fair Share said nothing is being done in New Jersey." The court agreed and said, "The courts in New Jersey will deal with fair housing issues." When we talk about housing, it's important to talk about who are we talking about? When we're talking about affordable housing, we're generally talking about people who have an income. Moderate income is considered, as the chart indicates, one person, $56,430. I won't go through each one. Very low, and then low. So, in order to qualify and apply for these affordable housing units, you have to meet the income level. So, you, this is not Section 8 housing. These are people who are, who have an income generally. They are teachers, people coming right out of college, can't find affordable housing. They're seniors in many respects. So, it's important to set the stage, who we are talking about when we're talking about creating affordable housing. As part of the Mount Laurel 4 court case, municipalities were given until July 8th to file a declaratory judgment action with the Superior Court. The court, uh, they were, each court was assigned a judge. In Morris County, Judge Niergard was the judge up until a couple of months ago. She retired. But, um, the court said, "You have to file a declaratory judgment action." And the declaratory judgment action would ask the court to look at your housing plan, determine that the municipality is in compliance with its obligations under the law, and get immunity from what's referred to as builder remedy. Builder remedy occurs when a municipality is not following or complying with the law regarding affordable housing, and a builder goes to court and asks the court to find the municipality in violation, and then asks the court to allow my project to proceed. You never want to be in a situation where the builder is running the show, because the builder will get from the court higher densities. They will determine where the project is to go, and you lose control. As the planning board and the township council, you never want to be in that position. You want to be ahead, driving the bus. In Parsippany, we had at least 10 developers who sought to be part of your action. They were permitted in as, um, as a intervenor or interested party. And we did file timely with the declaratory judgment action. The declaratory judgment action was filed in 2015, and here we are in 2019, and we're still not done. It's been a very long process. We are almost at the finish line, and we're now close to the fourth round, which starts in 2026. The township will be subject to these obligations as long as the legislature does not do anything. The governor, we've gone through Governor Christie, Governor Murphy, the different legislatures. No one has taken the, uh, the reins and changed anything. So, we're still operating with the court being the entity to hear affordable housing. So, in the very beginning, you had a report that was prepared by the Fair Share Housing Center by Dr. Kinsey. And he set forth a very detailed methodology to describe and to come up with numbers of what each municipality should be building regarding affordable housing. And the obligation numbers are based on the region. You are in Region 2, which consists, besides Morris County, Essex County, Union County, and Warren County. So, a municipality may think, "I have my, I have enough affordable housing." It doesn't work that way. They look at it by region. They take four counties, or how many counties are in each region, and then come up with your number based on region. So, Fair Share Housing Center's numbers for Parsippany, from the very beginning, were extremely high. Kinsey's report came up with 2,865 affordable units, and that's just affordable units. To build that many affordable units, usually we use the number times five. So, we're talking about building 14,325 total units. That was ridiculous. The municipalities joined together and hired their own consultant, which was E-Consult. E-Consult's numbers were significantly lower, excuse me, and the, it was a battle of the experts for the longest time, for several years, which methodology should be used and what numbers should be followed. It wasn't until March 8th, 2018, that Judge Jacobson from Mercer County issued a over 200-page decision, which resulted from a two-month trial down in Trenton regarding two Mercer County municipalities. And in reaching the numbers for those municipalities, the expert had to also look at the entire state. So, that methodology wound up being adopted by all of the other counties and judges. In our case, it was Judge Niergard. She had Richard Redding, who was the court master for the region, look at Jacobson's methodology, and come up with numbers for Parsippany. The numbers that were arrived at for Parsippany was 1,313 affordable units for the period 1999 through 2025. Fair Share did its analysis and came up with one more additional unit, 1314, which is the number that's been used by Fair Share. So, looking at everything that's been said so far, we started out with Fair Share from the very beginning in the Kinsey report, with 2,865 affordable units, and it went down by, uh, the second methodology used in the Jacobson decision to 1,314. So, that was a significant reduction. Parsippany is not the only municipality in the state with high numbers. This chart just gives you an idea of other municipalities throughout the state with obligation numbers over 1,000. As you can see, Parsippany, this is just a list of, I think, around 10. 1313 for Parsippany, the highest, Toms River, with 2,491. I also represented Edison at 2,000, so they had a very high number also. Where Parsippany stands regarding their number in Morris County, you do have the highest number, because you're the largest municipality. So, your numbers would generally be higher. You're followed by Hanover. So, the color rules provide mechanisms to address your number. You have your general number, but you don't have to live with that number. You hire experts like Ed Snikus and Susan, your planners, who will talk about how to get your number down. There are mechanisms in the rules that allow you to apply certain credits. You can also do a vacant land adjustment, which Ed will go into in more detail, which allows you to look at your township to see if you have any vacant land, to even do any building, and if not, these are various ways to reduce your number. That was successfully done, and it arrives at a number called the Realistic Development Potential, the RDP, and that number was determined to be 857 affordable units. And at our fairness hearing, it was adjusted to 845. So, the number that we are living with is 845 affordable units, covering the period 2015 through 2025. This is a goal. You may not reach 845, but you have to show good faith efforts to meet that number. If you don't meet the number, you have developers that are out there just waiting to take you to court, to sue you, to say you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, and ask that the court take action against the municipality. So, you can see there's been significant reductions, starting out with the 2,865 initially, went down to 1,314, and now we're at 845 affordable units. It took a lot of effort, a lot of discussion with Fair Share Housing Center. They promote the highest numbers that they can get. We have our court master, who's been assigned to the township, Brian Slough, who worked with us, and we believe we arrived at a very good number for the township, considering what we were initially faced with. So, the regulations also provide mechanisms to meet this obligation. So, how do we reach 845? So, we refer to it as a toolbox. There's inclusionary zoning, which are the developers who were very interested and became part of your case. They want to do inclusionary zoning, which is housing that has market units and affordable units. You can use 100% affordable projects, which can be private and/or municipally sponsored. We did not receive, or we were not contacted by anyone for an 100% affordable project other than Habitat for Humanity. And the problem with 100% affordable is that, that works if you have municipal-owned land somewhere that's big enough to build something, and you have to partner with someone to get project funding. You have a healthy trust fund, but it's not enough money to build housing. So, it was looked at whether or not 100% affordable would work. The problem was, again, for all the reasons I cited, there's no land to put that many units that's owned. You'd have to buy the land. There's a market-to-affordable program, which we are very happy with in the sense that it results in not having to build a unit. It's taking apartments that currently exist that meet certain criteria, and providing a subsidy to the owner, so that they can, um, mark down the rent, so that someone that who is considered affordable can live there. The positive nature of that is that you don't have to build a unit. So, we've incorporated that as part of our toolbox. Group homes for the disabled, mentally ill, accessory apartments, building something over garage, and various zoning mechanisms. So, you are, um, given the toolbox, and you determine what works best for the municipality. And we've, we had many meetings to discuss what would be part of the toolbox, also with council, um, and the Fair Share Housing Center, and also the court master. It was a long process, and the councilman can attest to that in various meetings that we've had. So, we put together a plan, look, using the various mechanisms from the toolbox, to come up with a plan to reach the 845 units, and entered into a settlement agreement that was proposed by Fair Share Housing. The key terms of the settlement agreement was a recognition that the township had satisfied its prior obligations and the third round, and that the third round included the gap period, which was a period of time when nothing was done. It was a recognition that there were 13, the obligation was 1314, but it was reduced to 845 as the RDP, based on the vacant land adjustment that was accepted for the township. The affordable units that will be built are subject to UHAC regulations. You have to have a certain number of moderate, low, very low, and certain bedroom distributions, and they have to be affirmatively marketed. The new construction has to be barrier-free, handicapped, accessible. And to effectuate all of this, the township has to amend its ordinances to provide for these units to be built. The township also has to adopt a housing element and fair share plan and spending plan. These were all obligations that were part of the settlement agreement. So, as I mentioned, we were able to enter into a settlement agreement. It was presented to council for review and action and approval. Once it was approved, it was executed by the township and Fair Share Housing Center, and we had a, what's referred to as a fairness hearing on the settlement agreement. That was June 21st. It was a hearing before Judge Gauss, who's in Sussex County. Judge Niergard from Morris County retired. I think most judges in these cases since 2015, most have retired. My case in Red Bank, the judge just retired, so I have a new judge in that case. So, we're in Sussex County now, and we had the fairness hearing on a Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock in Newton. And all 10 developer attorneys showed up, and it was a full courtroom, and we had a hearing, and Ed Snikus provided testimony. The court master presented a report. It's, it's important to mention also, the court master is an independent planner that's been appointed by the court to assist the judge in determining whether or not a plan is compliant. In our case, Brian Slough was very involved. He went to every site that we had identified for inclusion in the plan. He drove by it, did his analysis. He had questions. He required certain things to be included, to get from the developers, so he was very hands-on. And he wanted to make sure that the projects were properly placed, that they were buildable, doable, and that you weren't concentrating in any one particular area. So, those are all the things that were taken into consideration. So, we had been given 120 days from the June 21st hearing to, um, take action on 20 action items that were identified by the court master. As part of his approval of the settlement agreement, he laid out 20, 20 actions for the township to take. Some are, um, various compliance manuals, setting up programs, doing a spending plan. The most important is the adoption of the various ordinances that are needed to effectuate the housing projects. We were able to enter into development agreements with each of the, I think it's either eight or nine, um, developers, which was very critical and important, because you didn't want to have to be fighting in court with the developer and be tied up for years in that regard. So, that was very successful. And then, again, we are leading the charge. We are driving the bus. It's not the developer. So, we have a compliance hearing before the court, October 25th. At that point, we will be required to show the judge all the ordinances, and also the court master, all the ordinances that have been adopted. It'll be a large submission. There'll be all the, um, compliance manuals, all the actions that were set forth in the court master's report, we have to have done and, and approved prior to the October 25th hearing. And assuming everything goes well at the hearing, the judge will give the township final, um, final judgment of compliance, and you will have immunity through 2025, which means that you're protected. A developer cannot come in and demand certain actions, because your plan is covered, and you've addressed your obligation. So, the key question is, if you don't hack, what happens? I mentioned previously the builder remedy actions, where you lose total control over your planning, and planning happens with the courts. I always talk about the South Brunswick example. Judge Wolfson believed that the township was not acting in good faith. You had a host of developers involved in that case, who were very aggressive, and were successful in convincing the judge that the township was not following its obligations. So, the judge took away the planning power from the planning board and the township, and put in place a court, another court master, to work with the developers, and have the developers do the plan for the township. So, you don't want to be in that type of situation, where you, as the planning board, lose control, the township council loses control, and you have the builders telling you what's going to go in your town. And that ends my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any members of the board have any questions? You want to detain questions from the audience?
They're not witnesses, so they don't need to be questioned. They'll be public comment at the end.
Okay.
Okay. I make questions.
Mr. Snikus.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody. Good evening, planning board members. Uh, good evening, members of the audience. For purposes of the record, I'm not sure if I should be sworn in, because I'll be talking about the housing element fair share plan.
Raise your right hand.
Okay.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Name is Edward Snikus. I'm with the firm Burgess Associates. Uh, just for purposes of the public as well, we've been retained by the township as professional planners to assist in the preparation of the housing element fair share plan, and also to assist with the, uh, the litigation and the overall review of the vacant land analysis as well. And so, what I'll be providing is a really, a overview of the housing element and fair share plan. Uh, the, the plan is actually dated, prepared August 8th, 2019. Uh, it was duly advertised for tonight. Uh, this is a document that will be an official document that's part of your master plan. It's an, it's a required element of the master plan required by the municipal land use law. Uh, I just wanted to state that for the record as to what the document actually is. But as Leslie had described, the document really provides a holding place and a, a summary document of all the various issues and items that she had just talked about, as well as several that I'll, I'll go over as well. Uh, just also for purposes of record, there will be an errata sheet that I'll talk about at the end, dated August 19th, 2019. I did hand that out to the board. There are a few items that just require some clarification, and I just wanted to provide that to the board tonight and for the record, so that you're, you have that information in front of you. First off, the document contains many different scopes of the overall evaluation. It's a rather lengthy document. It will become even lengthier as we get through the ordinances and the spending plan and things of that nature. But this is the first step in that. But this is the first step in that document's preparation. And it's tonight before you for purposes of review and hopefully approval as a planning board. And it's this board's requirements based upon the municipal land use law to review and approve the housing element fair share plan. But I will state that this housing element fair share plan is built on the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is driving the issues relative to the housing element fair share plan. As Leslie pointed out, the court's requiring us, as a document, to amend and to revise our existing housing element fair share plan to this new document, this housing element fair share plan. The document does cover a number of things, including a community overview, talks about existing conditions within the municipality, various indices are covered. But what I'll talk mainly about is the fair share obligation and then the fair share plan, which is really the meat of the matter, just for purposes of the record. First is the vacant land adjustment. As Leslie had described, there is some mechanisms available to a municipality when they're confronted with numbers such as, you know, 1,300 units. There's a lot of units to consider. And so what we took a look at is, even though Parsippany is the size that it is, at 25 square miles, I believe, as an area, there is a lot of development that's occurred to date. And there's not a lot of vacant land from the perspective of overall numbers that we were dealing with. So, we were able to go through a vacant land adjustment, and this is just one image of the four images that I used to cover the entire township. But I just wanted to give everybody an idea of what we went through. The total vacant, total land area is about 16,215 acres within the community. Vacant and municipal parcels reviewed is about 5,200 acres worth of land. Vacant land qualifying was whittled down to 126 acres, plus or minus. And the reason why it was brought down to that number is that you're able to exclude things like wetlands, flood plains, steep slopes. There are some components of the environmental restrictions we weren't able to extract from the regulations, but only because COA did not act on the changes to those regulations. So we had, we were confined to the regulations of the affordable housing documents that were promulgated from the Fair Housing Act. Development land qualifying for RDP is 166 acres. The reason why that's more is that there is additional lands that you have to factor in during the development cycle between 1999 to 2025. Developments that we've approved in the past, things of that nature, that were required under the rules to be included in the evaluation of the vacant land. So as Leslie had pointed out, is that we were able to reduce the overall need number down to 845 units of affordable units within the overall plan. There are two other components of the obligation as well. As Leslie had touched on, is that there's the prior round obligation, but before that, there's also what's called present need or rehabilitation obligation. The rehabilitation obligation talks mostly to existing residential characteristics within the community. There was a, during the 2010 census, there was a review and evaluation of homes that may not have been up to code, whether it be, whether it be a roof condition or a critical system such as power to the, to the house or working plumbing, things of that nature, wherein those numbers were used from the census data to evaluate the need for rehabilitation. And that's called present need. That's 190 units. And what that really means is that there's an estimate of 190 units within the community that need additional assistance to bring them up to code, or might have a critical system and they're on a fixed income and might need additional assistance in order to get that critical system up to code. Prior round obligation, that was between the period of 1987 to 1999. That is actually consisting of two separate rounds, first and second round. And as some will know in the room that were here at those times, that was a very difficult period also for the township. But, we did in fact plan for zoning in certain areas, as well as, at the time, we were permitted to do what was called regional contribution agreements, wherein we were allowed to send money through development improvements within Parsippany. We were able to then collect funds that were then sent to a receiving municipality, in this case, it was Newark, that received that money and used it to rehabilitate and build rental units within that community. That mechanism, unfortunately, fortunately, was also voted or identified by the courts as not permitted. Because what it's doing is it's sending units away from an area that needs affordable units. So, the municipalities have to then plan for those affordable units within the community. But, that mechanism that we did use to send money was able to be applied to this prior round obligation of 664. In addition to that, we have a number of existing senior developments. We have other developments we also built within the community that helps us meet the 664 units. So as Leslie pointed out, that number has been addressed. The gap period in prospective need, as was also mentioned a moment ago, those are grouped together, that's that 1,314 units, but yet, as calculated, we have a calculated RDP of 845. When you subtract the 845 from the 1,314, it leaves you with 469 units of unmet need. And what that means is that there is a, from that regional need that's been assigned to Parsippany, that's the remaining amount that we specifically have to sort of come up with some ideas of where to plan for that and implement some zoning to implement it. But it doesn't have to be actionable within the time period of 2015 to 2025. The next item is the rehabilitation share. With that 190 units, and again, this is all within the housing element fair share plan, so the purposes of me covering this is really for the record. We have 190 units, but since 2010, we do have a program within the community that uses community development block grant funding. Since 1977, we've been successful in doing many, many homes within the community with those funds to help rehabilitate critical systems, whether they be roofing, upgrades to electrical, things of that nature. So from 2010 to 2016, which is the time horizon that we have to anticipate credits that we can apply towards this 190 units, we actually rehabilitated 39 units within the community. So that brings our rehab need down to 151 credits, or units, and required. What we have to do is just keep that program alive. We have to keep going forward with that program. We are going to be committing funds from our housing trust fund towards also further supplementing that rehabilitation need. So that will also be part of what's called our spending plan, which will be a separate component than the housing element fair share plan. It's required by the COA rules that we put that together to show, okay, you have this trust fund money, how are you looking to spend it in the, in the next five years? So we have that identified as one of the mechanisms to help support the rehabilitation Continuing on with the RDP, as Leslie pointed out, there are a number of tools that are available to address that. You can use prior surplus credits, and we do have some that we're using to carry forward to the, to the third round. We also have market to affordable mechanisms, accessory apartment mechanisms, alternative living, which is also another name for group homes, inclusionary housing proposals and zoning, which are some of the major components that are part of the plan. To address unmet need, we do have to have overlay zones and other mechanisms to address that unmet need from the RDP. So all that is covered in the housing element fair share plan. And what I'll talk about next is some of the existing and approved credits. So these are credits that are either already built, or either built or approved. So there are several developments that are existing within the community that give us credits, but there are also developments that are approved that we can also apply credits to. And many of those, a few of those were from the zoning board approvals. We have things like Baldwin Oaks, Brookside Manor. Those are two senior housing developments. The reason why you're seeing 84 and 127 credits here is that we are capped. Within that 845 units, you're only able to apply 25%. You're only able to satisfy 25% of the 845 units with senior unit credits. Otherwise, as you can imagine, communities would just build senior units. What many communities are dealing with is, unfortunately, impact to schools. Unfortunately, the courts don't consider impact to schools. That is not something we can bring to the table and say, look, we don't have the infrastructure for the school systems to address this. Unfortunately, there's a regional need, and every community has to accept their regional need, within reason. And that's where we're trying to apply the RDP criteria. We do have existing group homes. We also have some existing developments, 700 Mountain Way, Kingston Commons, and two other group homes, and an actual 100% affordable, which was only for one unit that Habitat had built on Sioux Avenue in the Lake Hiawatha area. So this gives us 243 total credits, but certain developments that were not, were built after a certain time period, give us what are called bonus credits. And what bonus credits mean is that for every rental unit, and this is not for a sale unit, but for a rental unit that's built after a certain period or is planned for after a certain period, you can apply bonus credits. But again, as with senior unit credits, we are capped at 25%. So you're going to start to see, why are some areas blank within the table? That's why, because certain types of units, for instance, this Habitat for Humanity or a market to affordable program was for sale. It was not for rental. So we couldn't apply a bonus credit for them. So you'll see things like that, but feel free to ask questions, obviously, as we get closer. Of the proposed sites, and this is an important part of the plan. We do have many mechanisms to address the proposed need, because we only have a total of 264 credits we can get from prior or approved sites. So we have to find ways of addressing the additional need. One is Stanbury. Many of you have heard of Stanbury's development. They are going to be providing 67 credits, and we can seek 67 bonus credits from that development. Mac Callie, there is actually two separate parcels of land within the Mac Callie development, which is the old Prudential Business Campus, that are being proposed for inclusionary zoning. There are two vacant locations that, within that development area. One is at Two Campus, and the other is at Seven Campus Drive. So within the development itself is the proposal for inclusionary zoning. Westmount Plaza, what this is, is, as many have talked about, may have heard about, is where Kmart has recently vacated the building. As we all know, Kmart, as well as many retailers, have contracted out there. Really, the market is changing, the retail market is dramatically changing. So there's a need to reconsider what to do with some of these properties. That developer came to the township, became a interested party in the overall development, excuse me, in the settlement agreement, and proposed to use a portion of that property as an area for inclusionary zoning. What's contemplated there is a mixed-use type of development that would be integrated with the rest of the retail. So it's not taking the ShopRite that's at that location, it's not taking some of the other strip stores that are there, but it's considering that location for where the Kmart used to be, at that location, and considering that for a new development type within that area. But that will be subject to a rezoning and then also a proposed development plan. 750 Edwards Road and 887 Edwards Road are two locations along Edwards Road, where there is one location that exists which has a contractor's yard located on it, that's at 887 Edwards Road. At 750 Edwards Road is a, I'm sorry, that was 750 Edwards Road. At 887 Edwards Road is a existing mixture of residential and commercial at a property. What's being proposed there is another inclusionary development location, and this is again, closest to Rutgers Village area. We have an area over on Johnston Road where Whitekurt Realty owns an office building. That office building is in a state of obsolescence. It was proposed as a location for affordable housing, and what's being included within this plan is an inclusionary housing development for that location. What's called SJP MCC 6, and, actually, it's just 6. What that stands for is Morris Corporate Center 6. As many may know, there was an old BASF office building that is a vacant component of the Morris Corporate Campus at that location. Because that site was vacant, it's near the UPS, the new UPS Technology Center that was redeveloped at that location. That site was brought to the township as an available site for affordable housing. The plan proposes the inclusion of that property. It's at One Cherry Hill Road at that location. Community options and advancing opportunities and avid community services of New Jersey, all three of those are proposed group home entities that are professional corporations that are non-for-profit, I should say, that are, that seek locations in single-family homes for, locations for people with developmental disabilities. What Parsippany has benefited from and the court took recognition of is the many group homes that we've already instituted within the community. What I was able to do as a planner for, for you is to actually implement and utilize many of those credits as mechanisms to address the affordable housing need. So just in summary, the prior cycle credits that we're applying to the third round is 211. Existing and approved inclusionary alternative living credits is 53. Proposed inclusionary developments and alternative living group homes is 539. We do have another mechanism that we're proposing is something called an accessory apartment program, and that's for 10 units. In addition to that, we have a market to affordable buy-down program of 35 units. I just wanted to talk about that real quickly. What that is, is a mechanism that is allowed under the rules, but only within reason, you can't try to apply it for all your credits. But yet, we have the ability to buy existing units within the community and convert those units to affordable units. What we look to do is take a significant amount of our trust fund and use that in that program, wherein what we're able to do is take an existing rental unit in many of our garden apartment locations, approach the developers, and establish a program by which we would deed restrict a location, a unit, within those developments, in order for us to get credit for that unit as an affordable unit. Unfortunately, as many may think, is that we have so many garden apartments within the community, what we have somewhere near 7,500 apartments within the community. Unfortunately, unless those units were built with deed restrictions that deed restricted them for affordable, even though they may be serving the affordable community, they do not get credit for affordable units, because the court will not recognize them because they're not restricted for affordable. In other words, developer or the owner of those units could rent them out to someone who's not income qualified, or within the limits that Leslie touched on earlier. So, but yet, we are seeking 35 units for credit. So as you can see here, we have a total of 848 total credits to be proposed to our plan. That actually is three more than we need, and that provides us with three units towards our unmet need requirement. But also, to address the unmet need, you do need to show an affirmative effort in some way to address some portion of that unmet need, unmet need of the community. So what we're proposing are things called overlay ordinances. What overlay ordinances are, is they don't replace the existing zoning in locations, but propose an alternative development option, excuse me, should a developer seek to build residential within those locations. Two of the locations are located along North Beverick Road. Those locations that are identified are overlay zones. One's an existing bank on North Beverick Road. One is also an existing auto repair location and restaurant. But yet, those can continue, what this is, is an alternative that should those property owners seek to redevelop those locations, they could redevelop them with some residential. Those two locations, though, specifically on North Beverick Road, we thought would be important to incorporate mixed use. What I mean by that is that in the requirements or the rules that would be established for those locations, would be a requirement to have commercial on the lower level, so that we're maintaining that same commercial look and feel to that corridor, but allowing some residential on the second floors, or upper floors of the building. I think we're going to be proposing up to three stories in that location. But obviously, we would require, within three-story configurations, we would require the appropriate setbacks and buffer requirements from adjacent single-family locations. 50 Parsippany Road, that's the existing Lanidex location, Lanidex neighborhood. As you've heard this evening, there was a redevelopment area that's being sought for that location. What Parsippany has experienced, it's, it did experience a benefit of many of the office developments that were built in the community. But unfortunately, what we've experienced is the change in the market. There was such a change that we're experiencing upwards of the high twenties, 20 percentile range of vacancies of our office buildings. What that means and translates into is properties that become available, as I talked about before, with the Mac Callie location. And the Lanidex is also another location that is seeking to redevelop that property relative to having a mixed-use proposal within that location. What is proposed is some residential with other commercial at that location. In addition to that, along Route 10, another property was brought to the township as another location for affordable housing. It's 301 Gibraltar Drive. It's the office building that's adjacent to Route 10. It was deemed available and available for affordable housing. We are proposing mixed-use residential and convenience retail at that location. In addition to that, going back to the Mount Arlington Shopping Center along Route 46, there is an overlay zone for the easterly portion of that tract, or as you're facing the tract. the tract to the right-hand side. The developer of that location had sought to say that there may be a need to consider some mixed use in the future at that location. Fair Share Housing Center, in their review of all these sites, had deemed that site as an appropriate site, but yet had also recognized that it's not available within the next time horizon of five years. So what we needed to do was to plan for some development at that location. Also, as many may know or recall, the former Galaxo Smith-Kline facility had become vacant. Galaxo Smith-Kline had moved out several years ago, and a developer bought the property. That became also available to the township as another location for potential for affordable housing. That location, though, we do recognize the sensitivity of its proximity to adjacent, single-family zones. We also recognize the existing characteristics of the property, including the existing Ballantine Carriage Home that's at that location. In addition to that, there is some vacant land that's along the frontage of Littleton Road, along the frontage of that property. What was proposed and what the township negotiated was to have age-restricted development at that location. If you recall, I did talk about caps on age restriction, but that age restriction applies to the 845 units of RDP, but it also then gets reapplied to the unmet need number. So there is some flexibility within unmet need to plan for some age-restricted development, and we thought that would be the most appropriate location. In addition to that, the reuse of the building for age-restricted development would be the proposal for consideration of assisted living within the foreground or within the frontage of the property along Littleton Road. That assisted living development would be like a, sort of like a nursing home, but not necessarily. It provides more of day-to-day care for the residents of that area, whether it be nursing care, doctor care, or food supplements, but there are some independent living units as part of that. So again, within that age-restricted envelope as well. And so all of that accounts for about 303 units at those various locations. So again, not addressing the total of 469, but showing to the court and to Fair Share Housing Center that there, we are trying to affirmatively address our affordable housing need within the community. In addition to that, what's also identified in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan is something called an MSO, or Municipal Set-Aide Ordinance. What this means is an ordinance that is in place that if, in fact, there was ever a use variance that's not foreseen within this plan, if there was ever a rezoning or a future redevelopment plan in the future, if there was those types of plans that included some residential of five or more units, there should be affordable housing component of 20 percent required from those developments. And that's only a best practices plan, in other, in other words, to make sure we're capturing units for future need within the community. And that's something that's going to be proposed and as a element that's identified in the Fair Share Plan. Also, affordable housing ordinance updates. Just for your knowledge, what's provided within them are the requirements that of the affordable units, 50 percent of the affordable units have to address the moderate income, 50 percent have to address the low and very low income. All of that 50 percent, low and very low, there's 13 percent of the total shall be very low income, which was a mandatory requirement from Fair Share Housing Center of every municipality that they had to address that. In addition to that, there is affordable unit bedroom requirements. There are three-bedroom units required. It has to be 20 percent minimum of the total number of units that are proposed. So a community can't just build one- and two-bedroom units because they feel they want to reduce the amount of school-aged children coming from facilities. Our hands are tied by the regulations. They say that you have to have at least 20 percent. In addition to that, there is a 30 percent minimum two-bedrooms, and the 20 percent maximum efficiency and one-bedroom requirements. So you can see the rules have very strict limitations at which to meet these requirements. So I just wanted to touch on those briefly. They're also provided. Again, just to visit back to the income qualifications, you have one, two, and three-person households, and these are the income levels that are currently by 2019 standards, the limitations of what they can make in a yearly income at those locations, excuse me, to qualify for an affordable unit. And so with that, that summarizes the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. I just want to quickly touch on the errata sheets, just for the record. What this is providing is, within the existing draft document that we submitted to the board, we unfortunately had a few typos that are covered. They're on page six. I've highlighted them in the errata sheets, if anybody's interested in separate copies here as well, where we've named the wrong town, unfortunately. It was some boilerplate language that we used, and I didn't catch it, and it happened to be Westwood, which is the town that we have our office in, so that's why I didn't catch it. So that's, that's, that happened. As well as when we rereviewed the overall document, when I was editing the document for a final time, I realized under our housing characteristics data, I had reused one section twice within the document. So I took it out, and the one section that I tried to move it from, and you'll see that crossed out on page 15, and that carries over to page 16. So that's a clarification there. Under page 30, on page 22, we had identified under population size, we had noted it reached its peak in 1950. It should have been 1970 was when we had the most units developed within the community, at 55,000 units built within the community during that time horizon. In addition to that, on page 52, there was a, from the GIS data that was provided from the county data that we had used from identifying specific overlay zones, the graphics that are depicted for the Lanidex property were inadvertently listing a, a different lotline configuration. So that lotline configuration was changed for that overlay zone number three. I just wanted to provide that for the record. On page 72, when we referenced the Stanbury development and talk about that redevelopment area and plan, there was a former name of what, what that was called at Shops at 1515. It's now called District at 1515, and I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that that's, that be appropriately addressed. On page 86 of the document, there are two new sections. When we took another look at the overall Fair Share Plan and then compared it to the settlement agreement, as well as the court master's report on the settlement agreement, we then referred to other documents that the court, the same court master has reviewed. In our office, we've represented over 20 municipalities for housing elements and fair share plans, so we have the ability to look at other documents and see what those requirements are. There was something called cost generation that was referenced in their review, that they'd like to see included in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. What that merely references to is the, the township should not impose overly restrictive requirements on an affordable housing development than any other developer would, would be required to address. You can, you have the ability under the municipal land use law to ask for traffic studies. You're still able to do that. What we are trying to address here is that it's done in a timely manner. It's done within specific understandings of the limits of the law, which this board is well-versed in, and you're well-counseled on as well. So that's cost generation. In addition to that, if you turn the page, we've added a new eighth, page 87, where it's identified for affordable housing requirements and affirmative marketing requirements. These are all items that are identified within the overall settlement agreement as required. We will be preparing these. They're all part of the overall approach and what we need for compliance, but it's just provided for further dialogue and further clarification in the document. So the reason why I bring these up as errata sheets is that if the board seeks to approve this, which I hope you will, because there are strict timeframes that we have to do this under, include these errata sheets, and what you'll have is a revised copy of this, subject to the changes or any discussions from the board, so that this is all now brought into one document and clarified. And so with that, that concludes my presentation to the board.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
Susan Favate is the contracted planner that serves the planning board. And Susan, I understand you have some of the proposed amendments to the master plan that's going to help us fix everything we talked about for the last hour.
No pressure.
No pressure.
My portion will be a little bit briefer, I hope, I can't just say. Not that you're over the line. Okay. So the portion I'm here to speak to tonight is a reexamination of your master plan, which we feel, as your professionals and in consultation with legal counsel, is required for basically implementation of the Housing and Fair Share Plan. And so I'm going to go through, through that limited master plan reexamination report that we've undertaken as part of this process and in consultation and coordination with, with Ed and Leslie as well. So why do this now? I think most people know that we're actually already doing a master plan at this point, a comprehensive master plan, which would be the first that the township has undertaken since the 70s. Why are we doing it now? This sort of limited master plan reexamination report is, you are obligated under state law to update your master plan or reexamine your master plan at least every decade, every 10 years. However, you are free, as a municipality, at any point to update the master plan or reexamine the master plan based on any changes that are taking place, changes in development, changes in conditions and assumptions and policies. And in fact, it's good practice to reexamine your master plan when those changes are occurring. Certainly, the adoption of a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that contemplates the development that we've discussed tonight is a fairly significant change in assumptions and policies and conditions that warrants an update to the master plan. Because the housing settlement agreement that we've discussed tonight does require adoption of zoning ordinances as part of the settlement agreement, to facilitate the development that's in the housing plan, state, state case law and federal case law as well requires that any zoning be consistent with the master plan. So you, you're changing the zoning, you want to make sure that the zoning is consistent with the master plan. You need to change them together in concert. And it's important to also note that this does not, not replace or disrupt the master plan process that's already underway. Our office is still working on that. We've been working kind of in concert. In fact, there were some, some synergies, to use a word that I hate, but I'll use it. There were some synergies that, that, you know, came into place, doing both documents kind of at the same time. So that master plan process is still underway, and we anticipate coming back to you later in the fall with the draft master plan that hopefully will be ready to adopt later in the year. So the required contents of a master plan reexamination report, these are all by statute. There are five of them. First, you have to look at what were the major key problems and objectives that the municipality was facing at the time of the last master plan reexamination, and that was in 2014 for Parsippany. You have to look at the extent to whether, how much those have changed, how much, how much those problems have been addressed or not addressed, whether they remain relevant. You have to look at what's happened in the interim period. Are there significant changes in your demographics, your built context, your land use that need to be brought into the master plan process? Lastly, you, you want to put, put out all your recommendations. Are there specific changes in ordinances, specific changes to land use that the master plan should recommend? And then also by statute, you're required to look at whether you're making any recommendations as relates to redevelopment plans. So I'm not going to read all of these words. I just wanted to provide you, these are the goals, the next two slides, that are in the 2014 reexamination report, and we have not changed them in the, this current reexamination report. We found that they were all still relevant, at least as relates to the very limited scope that we were looking at, only dealing with the affordable housing plan. We are making changes as part of the comprehensive master plan. We are making some, some streamlining and some changes to the goals, but those will be done in the later document that you'll be looking at later in the year. So a lot of these goals, that we think that they are generally still applicable, and certainly applicable when you look at their relationship to the Housing and Fair Share Plan, they deal with things like preserving your residential character in existing established neighborhoods, providing for buffers and transition zones between different types and densities of uses, making sure that you're protecting environmental features, making sure that you're promoting a variety of housing types at various scales and densities of development, and preserving and protecting and supporting your retail areas. Moving on to the next set, looking at aesthetic character and scale, making sure that you're preserving that. There's reference made to the State Development and Redevelopment Plan, which is really about growth management and smart growth, balancing those types of issues. Water supply is a very important issue here in Parsippany, and that's a goal that, that is in your 2014 reexamination report, remains in this reexamination report, and I can say will definitely be in the master plan to come. Troy Meadows is specifically called out as a key environmental area to protect. And then lastly, the, the final goal was added in 2014, and we certainly think it's still relevant today, is dealing with the health of your corporate and office areas, and making sure that you're providing some flexibility for owners who are interested in modernizing or adaptively reusing those, those areas. So as part of this plan that you have before you tonight, there are no changes to these goals and objectives. They remain exactly as they were in 2014. The next thing that we had to do is we had to look at what were the issues that were important to the township, that were being considered by the township in 2014, the date of your last reexamination report. And there are two aspects to this. There were issues that were newly raised in 2014, and then there's a set of issues that were previous, so your 2004 master plan, that the 2014 plan thought were still relevant. Bottom line is that we think all of these are still relevant in some way, and many of them, if not all of them, are being addressed as part of the master plan that is underway. Some of them, we're actually looking at already in terms of some zoning regulations that we're drafting as we speak. So these are all being affirmatively addressed. I'm not going to go through each one, but these were all important issues as of 2014 and still really remain so, and are not changed by this current reexamination report. There is, there were a series of specific updates to your zoning regulations that were identified in 2014, and some of them are still relevant. We've identified those that are, and those will be carried through in the, the upcoming master plan process. And again, some of them are also being addressed through zoning updates that are currently underway. Others have already been addressed. There were a series, if you remember, of zoning changes that, that this board recommended to the council and declared master plan consistency on, and that the council subsequently adopted. It was in the spring, I believe. And those were directly implementing the 2014 plan. So those have been addressed and will be taken off the table for the future. There is one that's no longer relevant. It dealt with potentially a rezoning of the 1515 Route 10 property. That has been addressed through redevelopment plan, as you all know, that's no longer relevant. So you'll see that there's a mix of things that are sort of still in play, things that have been addressed. We're required by the statute as part of a reexamination report to look through this, and that's why, one reason why this is 72 pages long. The good news is that it did allow us to, you know, kind of go back and make sure that we were keeping track of all of these for the master plan that we're working on separately. So all of these that are still relevant will be addressed in some fashion in that plan. This reexamination report that you have before you tonight really only is focused on the affordable housing and the Housing Fair Share Plan. So we did go through, looking at the significant changes. We were able to use a lot of the demographic work that we had already done as part of the master plan effort, and some key takeaways here, which I think Ed also carried through in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I think, as you all know, the population in the township has been growing. It's almost at the peak of 1970, but it does appear, at least based on the last few years of census data, that it might be slowing down just a bit. So the second half of the decade, past decade, is not experiencing the same growth that the first half did. The median age has increased, which means your population is aging, which is very much consistent with Morris County, but you do remain a bit of a younger municipality than the county overall. Household size has also grown, which could be an indication of more families, could also be an indication of more multi-generational families, which I think you probably have here. And that, that would explain why you might, you see an aging population, but also larger households. So that might be what's going on there. I think, as we all know, the township continues to become more diverse, as really all communities in this area are becoming. But in particular interest to Parsippany, your Asian Indian population has really continued to grow and now represents about a third of the total. That's, that's a really key demographic. Mean household income is just under 94,000, a bit lower than the counties, but still reasonably high for this overall region. And some good news, the number of jobs that are located in Parsippany have now recovered to their pre-recession levels. And then the flip side of that is that the people who live in Parsippany and have jobs, some of which overlap, but that has also increased. So your unemployment is down, and you can see where people generally work, there is that overlap of about 15 percent of Parsippany residents both live and work in Parsippany, but most people are traveling out of the community to work, about half of them somewhere in northern New Jersey, only about 5 percent in New York City. Something that's interesting is how, how can we have Something that's interesting is how can we have empty office buildings when our job numbers have recovered? One answer is that people are cramming more people, more workers, into smaller spaces. There are changes that I think happened as a result of the recession or related to the recession, changes in the nature of work and how space was used, and those changes appear to be, at least in the near term, permanent. So it's really changed how offices are used. And consequently, and related to that, is both the office and the retail markets in Parsippany remain fairly weak, and you can see that just driving around town. You have a fair number of vacancies, both in the office parks as well as your retail centers. Those are just kind of the key takeaways of where you are at this moment in time. So in terms of changes that are recommended by this reexamination report, as I've said, it's really limited to the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. So the intent here is to provide the policy basis for the rezoning and ordinance changes that are required as part of the settlement agreement and the housing plan. So when we look at the changes that we're recommending, they really are related to the land use map, the future land use map. We use the exact same map that was used in 2014 and only changed with regards to affordable housing. So the overall land use categories that that map contained have not changed at all. They will change in the future master plan, as you all know, we've already been talking about some of that as a board. But the changes that we've recommended, we've identified the specific inclusionary sites that Ed just went through. We've also identified the inclusionary overlay zones that he also covered that are meant to address unmet need. And then there were a few previously designated affordable sites that had been developed, and so we sort of took those off the map. So that really summarizes the changes to the map, and I'll go through that quickly. So there are four quadrants, because Parsippany is so big, it makes it easier to see, and even then, it's hard to see. So in this quadrant A, which is the southwestern portion of Parsippany, the only change here is we've identified that 301 Tribalter site, which is an overlay inclusionary zone. Everything else here remains as is. Similarly, quadrant B, which is sort of, I guess, west central area, what do you have here? You have Matt Calley, the two sites here. This is the Stanbury District 1515. Here's 1500 Littleton. And then up here, this is a redevelopment area that was already designated, previously designated on the land use plan, but the other half of that redevelopment area is the SJP Morris Corporate Center 6, which Ed just went through. And then lastly, we've identified Lanedex as an overlay area. So again, all of these are totally consistent with everything that Ed has covered and is in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. They just have to be reflected on the master plan, land use plan. Here, we have the two overlay zones on North Bevillwick Road. We have the two, I'm sorry, they're not down there. This is the West Mount Plaza, the Kmart side, and then also the future overlay side for that whole site. And then these were previously identified redevelopment areas. Again, no change. Lastly, quadrant D, which is your southeastern quadrant, it's really just these two sites on Edwards Road that are the inclusionary sites that Ed has covered. So that really summarizes all the changes on the land use plan. The last piece that you're required by the statute to look at in a reexamination report is, are you making any changes or recommendations related to redevelopment areas? I'm sorry, I preempted myself. Here's just a map that shows all the inclusionary sites that Ed just covered. We have Stanbury, we have the two Matt Calley, here's SJP Morris Corporate Center, Kmart site, and the two on Edwards Road. Sorry, I preempted myself. Just quickly, just to cover the overlay zones, which I know have already been covered, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. Again, these are meant to be future sort of aspirational, to try to allow the township to meet its unmet need requirement, really just to provide a reasonable development mechanism. It doesn't mean that any of this will happen. It provides the owner of these properties with some different options if they choose to develop under that zoning. The underlying zoning, as Ed said, doesn't go away, the overlay just goes on top. So here, this is 301 Tribalter, sort of the western end of Route 10. Here we have, this is the GSK GlaxoSmithKline 1500 Littleton Road. This is Lanedex, Parsippany Road is here. Then we have the two areas on North Bevillwick. This is the collection of two properties, as Ed said, one is, I think, an auto repair facility, and this is a bar/restaurant. And, you know, we worked closely with township council, and we certainly spent a lot of time amongst ourselves talking about these types of sites, trying to find areas that are perhaps underutilized, perhaps ripe for development and should be redeveloped, perhaps to improve conditions on these sites. So that kind of shows the thinking behind that. Here is the bank site. Again, it's not immediately in play, but maybe in the future. It's kind of an overly large site for a bank under modern standards. This is the eastern half of the West Mount Arlington Plaza Shopping Center. Again, this would be the longer-term potential here. The short term is here at the old Kmart side. And here, on redevelopment, this is the last piece. Short answer is no changes on the redevelopment areas. So all of these areas that are shown, when you see them here, these are all approved, previously approved by the township council, already in place. There are no proposed changes to any of those particular zones or increases in their area or anything like that. The one thing that's on the horizon was your resolution tonight, which is on the Lanedex potential redevelopment area. That's sort of separate and apart from this, will be before the council, and a decision will be made. But that's not part of this reexamination report. There are no recommendations that cover that area. So again, no recommended changes concerning redevelopment planning. And with that, I'll take any questions. Overall questions?
All set. Thank you, Susan. All right. You've certainly heard a lot this evening. I would like to take this opportunity now to open the floor to any of you that might have any comments on this. There's a microphone there, I believe.
Perhaps you want to use the same microphone. I don't think there's one set up for the public. It's a microphone stand.
It's a mic stand.
Oh, okay. It's right at that angle, I couldn't see it. Microphone's here, if you would just step forward, state your name and address for the record, and have your comment.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, Parsippany. Can you briefly describe the rules regarding the distribution of the low-income housing?
Mr. Dolsky, this is public comment, and it's not a question and answer period, unfortunately. If you have comments on what you've seen tonight, the board would love to hear them, but this is not a question and answer period.
I'd like the board, then, to please provide us with information and perhaps review the density and specific means by which some of these sites are being used. And so, for example, on the Kmart site, where I believe the plan is 311 units altogether, and 63 of them would be low-income, is there, well, I'd like to understand better how those... I understand the builder's, you know, ratio. I have been told that it would be illegal for the township to, say, purchase that site and build 311 low-income housing units, because the court wants, the town wants towns to not put all these low-income units together. And I would like to see a better explanation of what's feasible there in order to reduce the total number of units within Parsippany altogether. I would think it also would be a very reasonable thing to get, I mean, I have the Fair Share Housing Settlement, and I've read it, I've looked it over, and I'm still, you know, still trying to figure out, for example, how many total units this is going to be in the town, not just the Fair Share Housing units. And so I think it would be helpful if we got some explanations and some very clear summaries of, you know, total units that are going to be built and total Fair Share Housing units that are going to be built. I think it would also be very helpful for the township and for people in the township to understand the total, I'll call it lifecycle costs involved in different scenarios. And by that I mean, and I understand that the township does not have the means, or the opportunity, I should say, to claim that the additional units are going to be a cost burden on things like schools or maybe even natural resources like water, but it would be helpful for the people in the township to understand what are the costs involved. So if you took a look at this development, and you said, five years from now, we're going to have to build so many more schools or have so many more classrooms versus other options that the township may be able to take, such as building these units by themselves and not having to incur all the non-Fair Share Housing additional units, what are the trade-offs there? And we'd like to see, you know, what those financial alternatives are and understand what the impact would be on our taxes, because our taxes are going to go up. I don't think this, you know, unless you want to sit here and tell me that, you know, it's not going to affect our taxes, I don't think it's the person in this room who doesn't think our taxes aren't going to go up because of this. And we'd like to see what thought has been given to looking at different alternatives to minimize taxes in the long run. So better understanding, more clarity. This was nice, but still a lot of jargon and not really getting at a lot of details that make a difference to us. I think it's also important to include more information. I mean, I read this thing, and it had overlay zone in it. Never explained what overlay zone is. I understand that's not the purpose of the settlement, it's not supposed to be a primer and explain everything to the reader, but it was very opaque, and it would be helpful if it was, even tonight, I heard different interpretations of overlay zone. One made it sound more like, we're working with the owners, and if they wanted to jump in and build, we could facilitate it. And the other was, no, this is more for the future, it's not going to happen until 2025. So a little bit more insight, a little bit more clarity as to what overlay zone is. So those are the kinds of things that I think would help the residents really understand what we're talking about. Buffer zones was also something. I heard it mentioned in one of these cases. I did not hear it mentioned as an issue in the Arlington Plaza situation, but there are a lot of homes in that area, a lot of single-family homes that are adjacent. My home is actually adjacent to the Arlington Plaza boundary, and there's a lot of woods on both sides, and having a good buffer there was really important. But I don't know whether that is being included or not in any of this analysis. And by the way, in terms of errata, and I could be wrong, but I saw the description of Arlington Plaza, both in the settlement and in the slides tonight, say Mount Arlington. Now, Mount Arlington, as far as I know, is a town out in western New Jersey. If they're willing to come into Parsippany and help pay or take some of our Fair Share Housing obligations, great. But unless that's the official name, you might want to change, add to your errata list there.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, when I looked at it, I said, somebody thinks this is Mount Arlington. It cast doubt in my mind on what the hell does this person even know if that's what they're labeling this, in terms of anything else that was written in this document. So more clarity and answering our questions would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We all know who you are, councilman, but state your name nonetheless.
Good evening, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Robert Luso, 15 Larsborough Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey, former council, vice president. Just some questions. I am actually the person that came in front of the council, asking for this slide presentation to be reviewed again, to give the public an equal opportunity to review any locations that they were not aware of. There's been a lot of residents that have been approaching myself and some of the nonprofit groups, asking for information, so I appreciate the public information sent tonight. It's a good opportunity to learn a lot of things for the public that's been not aware of it. Obviously, being on council, I was well schooled on COA, I was partaking in some of the issues to try and protect our taxpayers. But, you know, some of the questions that I had, I'm going to rephrase them, not to a question, but throw it out there to make it a point of view. With the overlay area for proposed future development, evidently it's for a future round, five years. Where are we going to be five years from now, when, I'll use the example of Arlington Plaza, you know, is the builder going to come back to us as a planning board in a township and say, we want to build 1,000 units, you have an overlay plan? If we have to provide that overlay plan, can we put an age restriction on it? You know, obviously, we talked about the 50% restriction. Can we place a heavier restriction on an overlay? Also, the functional role of the plaza is changing, as well as other plazas like Matt Calley as well. So we're changing the functional role, but as you can see, they talked about our retail space declining, but there's no concerted effort by the building owners to find tenants when they know they possibly have that future development as an overlay area. Also, basically, you know, there's been a large discussion in our township about pilot programs using to assist the builders in building apartments in our neighborhoods. You know, I understand we're subsidizing 35 units through the Market Affordable Program that was mentioned up here, but really, how much does that cost on the taxpayers? I want you to really take a look at that, and, you know, pilot programs, we're not intended to help the builders, basically, with creating apartments. There's understanding also that there's an implementation schedule to be submitted for each step of the development process. I think that's going to be crucial, because the township really is going to be confronted with a lot of changes in our quality of life as we know it. We often have water restrictions, using the plaza as an example from the previous resident that came up. There's flooding issues in that area. There are special retention basins that are placed in that Arlington Plaza. You know, the plaza basically has been closed several times, like Hurricane Irene. So, you know, we do have to protect our current taxpayers, but we also have to protect our future residents as well. So there's a lot of consideration from a planning board and a zoning board perspective, and that we carefully monitor these projects step by step. Right now is an extreme traffic problem in a lot of these areas, which have not been resolved over numerous years. Specifically, you know, looking at these numbers, if you just add half the amount of vehicles that are going to be filling these potential apartments, you know, where's the traffic going to go? We already have numerous highways, and when they have accidents and problems, that they spill onto other highways and create additional backflows on the residential streets, causing, you know, strain on our local roads, but also creating more accidents and further endangering our children that are playing in local streets because somebody's trying to avoid the traffic on 46 coming from 80. So that's one of the concerns that I also have, but the strain on emergency services, you know, we need to have a plan. You know, if the court is requiring us to have affordable housing, each one of these elements, there needs to be a plan and a study conducted to preserve the quality of life for our taxpayers. As far as the Fair Share Housing Center's letter dated March 19, 2019, it notes the age-restricted credits and very low-income units. But what a lot of the residents are asking is, you know, can you provide information as a township telling us, you know, what does that mean? How many are going to be senior housing? How many units are senior? We know there's a restriction by percentage, but we want to know how many units are coming out of this to help our seniors that can't afford to live in our community? How many are going to be helping our veterans? Nowhere in the documentation that I've seen said anything about helping our veterans unless it was by an income status. Furthermore, those with disabilities. We know we've addressed that through individual group homes, which I know I approved when I was on council, to help those with disabilities. But, you know, people are looking to see how many of these affordable housing units are going to be helping these particular individuals. We also know about the bedroom distribution, and that seems to be the cloud amongst the taxpayers, because they have to pay for the additional expenses for the people that are going to be living in units. People are asking, well, if there's 313 units or 400 units in one particular project, how many are going to be one-bedroom? How many are going to be two-bedroom? How many are going to be three-bedrooms? That will actually outline for the residents what kind of sticker shock, if you want to see if there's going to be any tax increase because of the strain on services because of families moving in. But basically, these are some of the questions that I had this evening. I'm refraining them just to give you a point of interest. These are what the residents are looking for. You know, as mimicked by the previous taxpayer that came up, the slide presentation was good, it was well-presented, but people do want to know about the specific plan in the specific areas as they affect the people that live next to these proposed communities. So the buffer is very important, it's vital. We all know we've had these challenges on council, we're providing buffer... We all know, we've had these challenges on council, we're providing buffers for residents, versus, you know, the functional use of a retail space, now a mixed-use opportunity. So, the buffer's gonna be very important. So, step by step in this project, it's gonna be very important to protect our taxpayers. The court system has their mandates, but our mandate is to protect our taxpayers in Parsippany, and that's the reason why I'm here this evening. So, thank you very much, I appreciate, you know, listening, and if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Thomas, I'm at 30 Alba Place. And, my comment is, reviewing the slides, it was brought up that your, the density set for these affordable houses, for instance, we'll use West Mount, Kmart, 10 dwelling units per acre. Then, that generates 311 units. And that, I get that. Densities are set appropriately through your purposes of planning, for proper densities of people, light air, proper use of non-congestion, so there is non-congestion. Question, not a question, but the concern I have is, if 10 dwelling units per acre takes the entire shopping center property into account, and generates 311 units, now you're saying, okay, let's look at the eastern side of the property, we're gonna do an overlay zone with additional residential. So 10 dwelling units, 10 dwelling units per acre, isn't the real number. You're generating a much higher number now, maybe 18 dwelling units per acre, because you've already encompassed the property's use. You've encompassed the area of the property, just for your affordable housing, but now you're saying, well, with the overlay, we're gonna allow more residential. So the 10 dwelling units goes against the proper purposes of your own planning, with respect to densities, all the purposes in the state law, and all that good stuff. So I would just hope going forward, that the planners think that, consider that, that the density, maybe when you apply the affordable housing dwelling unit number, you say, listen, maybe it is 14, but that covers the entire property, including the overlay zone going forward. That's all I would suggest, because otherwise, the numbers, you're just making up numbers. So that's all. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mona Hertz, I live in an apartment in Troy Hills Village. I have a question about, I know you're wrong, questions. I'm concerned about what percentage of these future apartments will be reserved for people who already live in the town? So, I mean, are all of these apartments going to go to people from somewhere else, or will this, particularly the senior housing, be somehow helpful to the people who are already here? So, that's a concern of mine.
Thank you.
Brookside and Baldwin Oaks are federally subsidized housing, so there's no, the town has no control over those, if that's what's in the back of your mind.
I can't hear you.
The, Brookside and Baldwin Oaks are federally subsidized.
Right.
So the town has no say over who goes into those.
No, not those.
If that's what was in the back of your mind, as far as control.
These future apartments that we're talking about.
I understand that, ma'am, but what the motivation is, there's, they're different. They're very different.
If you want to know, does it go by town? There's one guy in the state of New Jersey, draws out numbers, and says he did an apartment.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing no one come forward. Okay?
No, I know, no questions. Again.
Hi, Isabel Alfano, I live in 8 New England Drive. So, once again, I guess we're trying to find clarification as the application process. So, I guess that's not really clear. But let's say that, one of the individuals that had been approved for these low-income housing, and what's the vetting process? If someone becomes, that there's a criminal history, or they become bad neighbors, do they lose that privilege? I mean, is there ramifications, as far as us as a neighborhood, to know who's coming into our communities?
It's not within the purview of what we're discussing this evening.
Well, I noticed that North Bevick and Edward Road, like, I know that you guys don't, are not concerned about the school districts, but...
Ma'am, just to be clarified, it's not that the board's not concerned, I'm sure they're very, they all live here, I'm sure they're very concerned. It's that they're not permitted to consider that, in their consideration of what's before them tonight, nor is the governing body.
I understand that, but I just wanted to just put on the record, I have eight-year-old twins, and in one, in my daughter's class, the ratio to student to teacher is 1 to 26. Where are we gonna put these children?
Where are they going to go?
Please vote in the school vote election.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion.
May I begin?
Go ahead.
It's time for board deliberation, I believe, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna begin with just a little bit of clarification for the board members, if I will, so we understand what's going on here tonight. Before the board tonight, is a master plan reexamination report, and a land use element and fair share plan. We are to vote on those, and to adopt or not adopt those. The reason we're voting on these tonight, is because the governing body has adopted the fair share plan. And, we've heard a lot of valid questions tonight. I share, I share Ms. Alfano's concern, as a resident, as well as board attorney, as to what's gonna become, you know, where will these kids go to school? It's very, I have two kids in the school system, I'm sure several people up here also wonder that same question. It's why it's important that we vote in Board of Education elections. Mr. Dulsky had great questions with regard to ratios and density. Mr. Paluso, you know, comments as regard to pilot programs, strain on emergency services, great consideration. And again, strain on schools, yeah, I believe you mentioned. But that's really not what's before the board tonight. That's, that was before the governing body, at the time that it adopted the fair share plan, and settled, effectively settled, the Mount Laurel case. And that was considered in public, in front of the governing body, I believe, with the township attorney here, who can probably confirm that if necessary. But the fair share plan was put before the full governing body, and given public consideration, as to whether or not this plan was a good plan, or a bad plan, or whether or not there might be a better plan. And it was adopted, and it's now sent to us, and it's incumbent on this board, in my view, from a legal perspective, to implement the plan. And I think the question before the board tonight is, again, not whether or not this is a good plan, or a sound plan, or a bad plan, or if there's a better plan. The question is, do the documents before you tonight, implement the plan that's been given to, given to us by the governing body? That's the question before us tonight. I mean, I imagine that we're free to vote no, and to deny it, on any basis that you'd like, but I can't tell you what legal turmoil that would cause the township, as between the planning board and its own governing body, and as between the governing body and fair share. So, that's, that's the question before the board tonight, and that's the question I would encourage you to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. The members of this board are all volunteers, and they're all, they're all members of the community. We are residents of Parsippany, just like you are. And I'd like to join Scott in thanking you for making those comments, there were some very good ones. Though we're a mixture of people here, we can't think of everything, that's why I'm glad that you're here this evening, to add your input. And I want to thank you for that. We take these things into consideration whenever any plans are presented to us. What's its impact on the town? And how do we mitigate that impact? That is every plan that comes before this board, for any kind of development. That's what we try to do, and we do it for you, as members of this, of this community. So we don't take it lightly, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing that I forgot to add, I'd like the members of the public to know that this is not, by any means, the end of this process, and nothing is done as of tonight. In fact, this is, I would say, one of the more ministerial steps of this whole process. After this, ordinances will be adopted to actually implement the zoning by the township council. And at that time, parameters will be set upon the various parcels, the various uses, where things like buffer zones could be given consideration. Again, then, once the ordinances are in place, anyone that wants to develop any of this housing, will need to come before this board, and present a specific site plan. And this board will then have the opportunity to consider things like buffering, and other site plan considerations. So I would encourage you to participate in those processes as well.
Thank you. Board members, do any of you have any comments?
I do, indeed.
Please, Mr. Denver.
First off, I want to thank very much the planners who made this, put this plan together, and I think their presentation was excellent. It's not the first time I've seen it. And I really appreciate the hard work that you put into it. I also want to address the wonderful public who's come out and let their voices be heard. What we are adopting here, is a framework for us to work in. We are adopting a framework for developers to come and propose things. What you heard tonight is not, oh my god, we're gonna put a bunch of townhouses over here, and a whole bunch of arc homes over there, and that sort of thing. It's a framework where zoning can be used, for people who have an economic interest, to come in and say, under these circumstances, with these rules, I'm willing to put these homes here, so that I can give you the affordable housing you need. It's quite possible, quite possible, but not likely, that no developer will come to us at all. They'll just say, you know what, we don't like those rules, we're not gonna do anything. So, the process is one that's going to extend over a period of time. It's not gonna be all done at once. And each project will be one that will come to us, and provide a site plan, and say, we want to do this, 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 and this. And we'll look at it and say, you're encroaching on the neighbors' backyards, we can't allow that. Or, you're doing something else that is not, your traffic plan doesn't work. We have a say in that. And you have a say in that. You can, when those specific plans come before us, one of the reasons we can't give you specific numbers, we don't have the actual plan, we have ideas as to what those plans are gonna be, but we don't actually have them. So until we have them, and we rule on the site plans, I think we have been given an excellent framework, from which we can work. And I am going to vote in favor of sending this framework, setting this framework up as one we can work within. And we'll see, when applicants come before us, and present these site plans, that we'll say, that works, that doesn't work, this hurts the neighbors. Or the neighbors will come in and say, this is a real problem for me, and maybe we can adjust it. That's how this process is supposed to work, and I think we have been presented with an excellent plan, to meet what the state, or the courts have mandated, that we have to provide affordable housing, both for people who live in town, but also for people who might come to our town. That's not within our purview to say, no, you can't live here. This is, this is America, if somebody from Elizabeth or Union wants to come and live in Parsippany, that's up to them, if they can meet the requirements to buy the house, or the apartment. That's not our choice to say yes or no. There it is, they can have it, if it's there and available. So, I just, I like the plan, I think our planners did a very good job. Again, you also asked excellent questions, and it's a multiple-step process, so I'm gonna be very much in favor of voting to adopt the master plan reexamination report, and the housing element and fair share plan.
And the errata.
Along with the errata.
Corrected errata.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. DiPiero.
I'll go last, go ahead.
A question for Ed, this is a technical question, more than anything else. With respect to the Kmart existing building, would that have to be torn down if there were an application to build housing there? I don't see it as something that could be rehabbed, from the ground up, and formed into housing, is that correct?
The concept presented to us, and the zoning that we're gonna be looking to implement, is to take that building down.
Yeah.
But then build a new building.
Just demolish it and start from the slab.
That's the concept.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, John? So, a few questions first. How long do we expect this document to be in force, since we are looking to adopt a new master plan in the next few months?
The master plan will basically incorporate everything that's in the reexamination report, as well as the housing element and fair share plan. So, some of the issues that I've raised tonight, that basically we're deferring to the master plan, those will be addressed later this fall. But everything that relates to the affordable housing aspect, will just be incorporated within the future master plan.
Okay.
So they'll all be consistent with each other.
So I guess where, what my concerns would be, is how many projects might take place between the time of this adoption, and the ordinances that will follow with when the next master plan will be in place?
Yeah, I can't predict, I mean, there's definitely people who are interested, property owners that presented concepts to us. Will they come in in the next three months? I don't know.
And Ms. Pavati, I forget, what is the date of delivery, scheduled date of delivery for the master plan?
Certainly by the end of the year, I mean, later in the fall.
Right.
We're hoping to come back to you, either in late September, early October, with a draft.
Right.
So we're moving along on these sort of parallel tracks. Whether a developer comes in in the interim with a site plan that might be in the works, I can't predict.
So, the reason for asking that question, is because I would just be concerned that the language that we use in the, in the master plan and the ordinances, would be so vague, as identified in page 49, section 16, that it might allow for things where this board doesn't have an appropriate amount of oversight. And so, the things that we talked about with the buffer zones, and other elements, if the language there is not concise enough, or sometimes too concise, then we won't have the authority to say, no, you need to have more than 100 feet between your property and the next property. And that's where some of my concerns come into play.
So another piece of this process, which we've kind of touched on, but not really, you know, delved that deeply into, is the content of the ordinances themselves. Ed and Leslie and I have been working, you know, very feverishly, I would say, in the last couple months, in particular, but, for instance, Ed and I sat down and spent a couple hours on each site, and looking at, you know, the appropriate types of buffers, the appropriate heights and densities, and all of these things. So, there will be controls in those ordinances, whether or not the future master plan is in place or not. And I will say that having, you know, being, working on the master plan at the same time, all of these things were definitely in my mind.
Yeah.
And ideally, you know, they all, they all support each other.
And certainly, that's something more for the ordinances, as you said, then, but that's where my concerns are, and I just want to make sure, Mr. DiPiero and the council is aware, that that's a big concern for us.
Absolutely, and the ordinances are pretty detailed, in that regard.
Yeah, because we don't want this three-month time period, where there's a free-for-all, and then all of a sudden, better restrictions come into play.
Yeah, no, I would definitely not characterize it as a potential free-for-all. There are, and will be controls in place, that this board will have, you'll have the tools that you need to control that.
Okay.
Any other comments from board members? Michael?
Well first, I would like to thank Ed and Leslie for doing a fantastic job. Getting the numbers down into the 800s was, it may seem like a shock to the residents who didn't see the whole process, but that was a great accomplishment, and I compliment you, and thank you for that. The ordinances that are gonna be created, I mean, our next meeting is in September, and we have a first reading and a second reading, and you need it by October...
20...
That's a, that's a short timeframe, we're gonna, we're going to need ordinances at the council meeting, at our, at our next meeting.
Yes, yes, you'll have them.
All right, we have, we have an accelerated rate here, we have to go through to pass these ordinances.
Leslie is...
And those normally come back to the planning board anyway, for approval, before the final adoption. So, you'll have your point then, towards, worry about the densities and everything.
Thank you.
I was gonna talk about site plan too, because a lot of the questions from the audience, related to details that we won't have at this point in time, and this planning board will be concerned about all of those issues, when we have site plans and... plans in front of us. If you talk about just the Kmart, for instance, if they're going to have housing there, well, we're going to need better intersection in that area.
Oh, yeah.
To send traffic in either direction, that'll, that'll be all, be considered here by this planning board. They have to satisfy us that they're going to be able to handle the traffic.
Just one word of advice, Mr. Councilman, the, the traffic considerations are primarily at the governing bodies, so let's make sure we raise them there, please.
Well, I'm, I'm wearing both hats, so.
Right, I know you are.
And dealing with a state highway.
Yeah.
Just the, the timing on that light in front of the Holiday Inn would make a big difference. Any other comments from board members?
I'd just like to express my gratitude. You guys, I, the first time you, I saw the presentation, I was, you know, my head was spinning, and this is my third time, I think, I've seen it. So I kind of understand the whole concept and, and the terminology. It's my learning curve, not yours, obviously, but thank you very much for, for really taking us to, to this point. And just, just one other point, with a lot of these developments, I, there was questions, fair questions raised about flooding issues with some of these locations. A lot of these parking lots, as I understand, were grandfathered in, and, and no one would be able to build a parking lot like they have there now. I mean, that, that thing is, that's a, that's runoff waiting to happen. And so there are, there are benefits that we're not necessarily stressing right now, which will come into play, too, with these, with, with some of these redevelopments that will come down the line. But anyway, that's enough, but thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Go ahead, man.
Yes, thank you. I too appreciate what the planners have done and the number of hours they put in, hard work, a lot of considerations. And as we move along, we'll have an opportunity, if we have concerns, to address them at the time we, we have our next meeting on this. Thank you.
We miss anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the planners and the attorneys especially for taking us from the thousands down to the six hundred, eight hundred, whatever the number is, and multiply that by five, and we've saved how many thousands of units because of the work of our attorneys and planners. And thank you very much. As a resident of this town, I appreciate that.
Ms. London, you must have those magic bracelets, because anyone that can hold off ten developers and their attorneys at 3:00 PM in Newton on a Friday...
And how to get out of there.
And I know this process is going on very long. Ed, you are not allowed in Atlantic City, you're too good with numbers. They won't let you there?
Maybe not with names of developments.
But yes, I just have to add my thanks. It's been a long, long journey. I think you said five years worth of this. It's come a long way, but it's important for the future of the town. Not going to please everyone, we know that. No development application, no matter how big or small, ever does. And this is something, though, that we're mandated to do by the state, as Ms. London stated at the beginning of her presentation. Susan, thank you for pulling all of this together to show us what needs to be done to fix it. So thanks to all of you, and thanks to the public for coming out this evening.
Can I make just one more statement?
Sure.
Most of the residents are not even aware that we went through round one and round two. Most of the residents would not even know where we've put our moderate, low-income housing and how we've addressed the issue, because we've done a good job. And the distribution is, it's not in one location, it's, it's separated, and we minimize the impact on our school system as much as we could. Those are rounds one and two, and they, they've come and gone, and we're living with that. And how many people claim hardship? So round three, we're going to make every effort to, again, minimize the negative impact on, on our residents. We may not be a hundred percent successful, but we're going to do our very best to minimize the impact on our quality of life.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're going to want two motions on this.
Yep.
One motion to approve the master plan reexamination report, and a second to approve the housing element and fair share plan.
Is there any way that we should identify it, or we just know which one I'm going to move?
How about you say, motion to approve the, the master plan reexamination?
That was what I was about to say. Motion to approve the master plan reexamination report.
As presented. This evening.
As presented, yes.
Is there a second?
Second, Mealy.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
I also move that we adopt the housing element and fair share plan as presented tonight, including the errata.
The errata and the errata.
As amended.
As amended.
The corrected errata. Is there a second?
Second, Perewick.
Perewick seconds. Please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Is there any further business to come before the board this evening?
I have, I have a question, actually.
Only comments.
Only comments. Waterview Boulevard.
Yes.
The intersection of Waterview Boulevard with Route 46 does not match what I remember we passed all those years ago. My memory of that intersection was that there would be a full lane for the cloverleaf to be turned into the right turn lane, that there would be a center lane where it would be possible to go straight, or to the right, or to the left, and then a lane all the way over the, the left-hand lane for left-hand turns. What I see there now is no full lane for the cloverleaf, so that when somebody comes around that, they have to stop, even though it just says yield. When it was presented to us, they said there wouldn't have to be a stop sign there, that people would be able to go through that cloverleaf. There'd be a yield because you have to, but you wouldn't have to have a stop there, and that there would be three lanes from Waterview going to Route 46.
Would that have been in the resolution?
It wouldn't necessarily matter if it was in the resolution or not, if it was part of the plans presented. It's possible, that being state jurisdiction, that the state requested or overrode what was approved. It does raise a question, if the state changed the access as to whether or not they would have had to come back here for amended site plan approval. Jen, is that something your offices would look at?
Probably, yes.
Could, could we maybe send somebody out there with the plans and see what's being constructed differs from the plans?
I will try to do it tomorrow, Wednesday. I'll try to go out there.
Because you have nothing else to do, right?
I've got nothing else to do.
Thank you.
Thursday, the weather's going to be nicer.
I, I also don't know if they're done with that yet or not, but I believe they were to put a left turn arrow to 46 East.
My understanding is it's not done. That's why you have...
It's not finished yet?
It is, the project is not completed. So that's why a lot of changes you haven't seen yet. There's, there's no final inspections from engineering. The tenant spaces, some of them are going to have TCOs and occupy, but the site improvements are not completed yet. We allow the TCO and some of the tenants to occupy as long as the conditions are safe, but all of the changes are not even close to being made. So it's kind of a work in progress, but we're trying to help the tenants by getting them open as quickly as possible.
Do we have a date on any of those?
So I'd have to talk to engineering, I'd have to talk... Tomorrow, construction has an all-day meeting on Waterview for all of the final inspections for the spaces, because everybody's trying to move quickly. But engineering is handling the site improvements, so I would have to reach out to everybody. As zoning, remember, I'm all paper. I don't go out and do any inspections. I'm just, I'm the person behind the papers, so I'd have to go out and do a site inspection and find out.
Kind of, kind of related to that site, whose jurisdiction is that jug handle that goes around the post office? I thought I was on the Land Rover test track.
In all likelihood, that's NJDOT jurisdiction, because it has, it accesses a state highway.
Okay, well, it's in bad shape. And I know a lot of our town trucks go around there because of the yard being...
That's what it is.
And it's probably chused it all up. It's...
The plows, I mean, same trucks, the dump trucks and all that.
Garbage trucks, everything goes around there. It's...
Similarly, I'm sure a lot of you have noticed that Route 202 was paved from Route 10 all the way north, and they stopped repaving right where the pavement gets really, really bad.
I noticed that.
And that would be because that's state jurisdiction, the county's jurisdiction ends there, and the overpass is state jurisdiction.
That's probably the worst section, too.
Yeah, it's like the surface of the moon there.
I just got a flat tire there, like, two weeks ago, same section.
Like Paul Miller sells so many Land Rovers in there. Okay, any, any other business?
Move adjourned.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Man adjourned, thank you.